Okay, everybody, welcome to the June 8th meeting of the Petfield planning board. Allison, please call the roll.
Mr. Hetske.
Here.
Knower?
Here.
Tidys?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Nursing her?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Weiser?
Here.
We've got minutes from our last meeting. Comments? Changes? Do you want to entertain them?
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
Okay. Moved and seconded?
Hetske.
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tidys?
Aye.
And I should point out, I did watch the video, so I'm up to speed.
Thank you, Bob.
All right. Thanks for sharing.
All right, on the agenda.
Hi, Zach, how do you?
We have one tabled item. As always, baby landing. We haven't heard any updates, so at this time, the board can take no action. As opposed to a continued table, we can take no action. The board's okay with that.
Okay. Motion to continue table?
Well, we're doing no action.
Oh, no action, okay.
No updates. So, with that being said, we will wait more updates for that project and move into our miscellaneous items. There are two on the agenda this evening. The first is for eyesight. The discussion continues from our last meeting on the 25th. The board asked for a few items from the applicant and from staff. First, from staff, we took the landscaping that was proposed on their enhanced plan and the rendering that was provided that showed what the mature plantings would look like. We sent those to the landscape consultant for his review and input comparing both. He agreed that the rendering was an accurate representation of what the enhanced landscape plan showed. I have an email from him confirming that, so unless there are there any other questions about the landscape plan that the applicant proposes at this time? Or move past that item?
Yeah, let's move past that item.
Very good. The other part of this, the applicant was directed to provide renderings for the board's consideration regarding the appearance of the building since the board's discussion in comparison to what was built and what was approved in 2015. The board has discussion. The applicants come back with renderings, a couple photos at different times of the day to try and capture some of the notes that were, or some of the discussion points about lighting that were had. We also have a sample of the stone wall that is, was shown on the plan, approved on the plan. However, it had not been constructed yet. The applicant has come back and said in their responses that they do plan to install that stone wall by the patio in front of the building, and a sample was provided. There's also a handout that shows kind of the style in which the wall would be assembled. That's included in one of your hard copies. Again, there is a written response from the applicant as well, trying to capture what has been discussed and what they've proposed thus far. And based on that, I'd open up to the board for this discussion. We can pull up any, Doug's already started pulling up some of the examples. On the projector, you have handouts as well that the applicant's provided of the same photos to give you a better picture, since it is difficult to see on here. So, if you have questions, I'm here to answer.
I'd like to applaud the applicant for their willingness to try to find some common ground and some things that they could do to improve the look of the building consistent with the board's request of a few weeks ago. And I think what they're proposing to do is a very nice compromise.
So, just to capture that, one of those, one of the additions that they've added on the renderings is, correct me if I'm wrong with the terminology, but would appear to be those decorative cables.
Stand up higher.
Decorative cables, I'm gonna go with that. They're not really providing any support, but they are, excuse me, a decorative element that was featured on the original plans, and they've brought that element back in on these renderings. I should point out-
There's two different designs right there, right?
Yeah.
One's taller and one's lower.
Right, and I'm glad you brought that up, Doug, as the board's supportive of one over the other.
I say the taller, the-
Yeah, the one on the left.
The one on the left.
Over the one on the right.
That's my view, anyway.
Any other thoughts?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that. Doug, can you close it on the right then?
Yep.
Thank you.
Can we see-
It's one of the things that's been captured. Sorry, Bob, but-
Oh, sorry. Can we see the back of the building, the existing?
Sure.
We should have site photos.
Yep.
Yeah.
Five or four, one and two. Uh, you gotta go to the other one. Because those were your pictures, I don't think you guys caught the back. There you go.
There you go.
Okay. Maybe zoom in on the right.
Trying to get both angles. I should point out that in their responses, they proposed, with regards to the staining of the wood, they proposed to apply the same treatments to the back of the building as they are showing on the front.
Right. Okay, can we, can we also go back to the original rendering that was approved?
On that same side?
No, I'm a-
Okay.
I'm sorry. Jumping around.
That's okay. That's why we got the computer.
And then zoom in on the center. I was just trying to figure out what on the, on the original rendering, what those features were in the three groups there.
The, what looked like vertical shadows?
Yeah.
You know, that's just the straight up-
Yeah.
Black lines. The applicant is in the audience, if you'd like to ask questions for clarification. They've explained before that this, in the previous conversation, this was part of a concept rendering. But this was what the board had referenced, what was presented to the board two at the time, so.
Yeah.
Question I have is, with those proposed, let's call them cable supports on the left, what would they look like if they extended up toward the top, similar to the ones on the right in the original rendering? You know, is that a feasible thing? Or is it, would it make much of a difference? What are people's thoughts on that?
Well, I think the reason that they're showing us two is because one would incorporate the existing connections that would have to be relocated up the columns and the one that, that-
Why?
Were suggesting they'd have to go up.
Right. I believe that that's true.
So, to go back on-
To me, it was one of those things that added a lot of dimension in the original rendering, that added a lot of interest to the building.
It created more, more of a visual above that eyesight sign to the, to that top line by the windows. Of course, the original one has-
The wood.
Wood area as well.
And I think it's good that Doug had that other rendering before on the right side. That kind of shows the current locations of those exposed support brackets as they're installed today. Just for reference compared to, no, it's behind, there we go.
Yeah.
Kind of like you said, Jim, it would involve relocating those.
So, if those rods went, say, half again, so where they hit the vertical member of the building, if they were half again, you know, yeah, right where the hand is, where the cursor is.
We don't have an image of that right now.
No, I know, I know we don't, but I'm looking for feedback from you guys.
Do you think it'd look better if they moved it up? Or was it the wood that actually made it look better in the first drawing, you know, from the original one? Is it the wood or the-
I think it's-
The cables that makes the difference?
I don't know.
That's a little Jimic question. Potentially a combination of both.
Yeah. Can I help? If I could help you guys see it.
The applicant's contractor just handed us-
We were just kicking around exactly what you're talking about to try to, you know, make everybody happy. Jim, what did you just receive?
Another alternate rendering-
So, this shows-
That keeps the support brackets where they are, but extends the decorative cables up.
Up to the-
Up to the top. Now, that's a, that's flat against the building, but, you know, if you guys want to the sign, if that's better to go high up, that's fine. So, that might give you a little bit of value. That's flat as opposed to coming to the sign.
To me, it's closer to what the original rendering showed.
Well, it fills in that area more than it was previously.
It's a fairly tall building.
Yeah.
And, and what we're looking at here is-
Okay, so to sum it up.
Will you even see that cable if they make the wood darker, though? Are the cross pieces still white?
Yeah, if you bring it up to the, to the, the sign-
Enter the sign.
As opposed to being up against the building upside?
Well, and the back, are they stainless or are they?
Stainless? You know, I don't, I don't think that that's anywhere near as important. We've never really-
No, I'm talking about color.
Back of the building.
Agreed, but do we match the color of the back on the front?
Yes.
With a stainless steel color? Or should it be black? I mean, currently, I think they're stainless or aluminum or, you know, some sort of silvery.
The black is what was originally proposed, and I think they're black.
Correct.
Looks great.
So, you prefer black? And all the way to the top?
To the intersection of the beams and the-
Yeah, so-
From the sign.
Yeah, so where they meet the sign right now, up to the top.
Correct.
And then with the X. And in between. Crisscross.
Just writing all this down.
Terry?
And if you guys think it's gonna help, I mean, so it's gonna be just a cable attached to the building? Like, flush?
And attached to the sign marquee.
The sign.
Yeah, so you see those supports there?
Yeah.
You want those treated, too?
Pretend that they're up closer, you know, right at the top.
Right. And he's gonna put the cables on the building.
Yeah. Not on the building, but-
Just from in front of it?
Going from, say, top left to, yeah.
Doug, do you have the rendering that they were? I just want you guys to know, the supports that are there can go away. They're structural. So, we're adding-
They hold that beam up.
Oh, yeah.
So-
Those are braced through the building to the inside of the wall. And that's part of the reason why we ended up-
Want the back of the table so we capture on the microphones?
That wall itself.
Yeah, come on up here so that we can get you on the, on the record.
We can, we can make those cables black and add whichever version of that you'd like, but we can't unbracket those and move them up, because they are massively engineered into the wall through the building to support that, those 11-foot feet horizontal pieces of wood that are there. 11 feet long?
No, 20 feet long.
20 feet long. So, we can't undo that. But I, I don't think if we make it black and add the crisscross, I mean, you guys can kick that around. I still think it's gonna add a nice dimension in the front of it, and I think it'll accomplish what you guys are-
Well, so will the stain, and so will the stone wall, and so will this-
But I just, you know, wanna be sure you guys are clear on that, if that's, it's not-
Those won't go away.
It's not a slink.
The others would be added.
Yes.
Those would remain, the others would be architecture.
But we would make them all, we can make the existing ones the same color as the new ones, if that's the preference of the board, which I think that would make most sense, because that would look silly having it be two different colors.
Okay, so-
Is that helpful?
Yes.
Thanks.
About to the original rendering.
And we have short guys here. And then we have a tall guy also.
What I'm hearing.
Stuff like that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, just because we're kicking something around that we don't have a drawing or a rendering of, perhaps the smart thing to do here is table this and ask the applicant to give us a rendering showing us what we're asking the final outcome to be, so that when we approve it, we know what we're approving.
Exactly. Yep. I agree.
Okay.
No room for error, this thing.
You agree with that, Bob?
I do. So, submit a final rendering, displaying all the items captured here this evening. Back of the building, we're only talking about coloring and stain. Color the existing brackets to match the front. Don't add any more. And include the brown stain on the elements indicated for the front and back.
As they proposed.
That's, yeah, that's something that we should probably clear up. So, right now, what's proposed is darker stain on the vertical beams and the horizontal 20-foot beams where the eyesight sign is. Okay? And then on the rear of the building, same, same deal. Basically, the, the vertical beams and that horizontal beam would get a darker stain. The rest of the wood would stay the same as it is now.
And it will age over time.
You're comfortable with that?
Yep.
You're comfortable with that? Terry?
So, we're not gonna change the stain up there, your stain?
The stain will change only on-
The front?
Here.
Yeah.
Here, here, here. And the edge.
Can you go back to the rear of the building?
The main body will stay the same, and the, the cross beam that holds up the eyesight sign will change.
And why don't we want it to match the back?
The back would also, so those vertical beams will change to a darker color, and that horizontal beam will change to a darker color. So, it'll be kind of a two-tone.
I was by there again the other day, and I think that's real light. You drive around that building. I mean, there was a lot of concerns that most people had, I mean, that color, but, I mean, it's a whole, you know, you're driving a whole building. I think if you're gonna go dark on the front, you should go dark on-
We're not going-
We're not going-
We're not going dark on all the front. Just, that's why I wanna clarify this. Just now, just this, 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 and this. So, you notice here, you have lighter here, dark, 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 and then this beam, the horizontal beam going across is dark. So, it creates a two-tone. Personally, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, it might be outvoted.
Yeah, it's okay, go ahead.
But I just wanna-
I like the darker color.
Clarify that that's-
The same treatment.
Yeah.
Since we're splitting hairs, we might as well-
Yeah, okay.
It's important to note the same treatment applied in the back.
I like the darker stain.
Okay.
I talked to someone, but yeah, you're right.
So, we're comfortable with the changes that they're making to the stain? And asking them to come back with a final rendering on the, I guess they're gonna be decorative support cables that go from the top border down to the-
Sign.
To the beam? And do we want the X?
Yes.
Beamed cables as well?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then the-
Would you like to see an image of the back as well?
Knee wall. Will be built out beyond the patio, I guess, right?
Yes. Say that again.
Beyond the patio, that the wall, the knee wall.
What do I?
It's built sort of in the front of the patio.
Yes, yeah, just adjacent to the-
Yep.
You can get 18 inches tall, so you can, you know, like chair height, you can sit on it.
Right, okay. Okay, you guys comfortable?
And I'll make a motion, motion that we table this matter to permit the applicant to submit one last rendering that captures what we've discussed here tonight on the front of the building.
Okay, you got a second? I'll second. All right. Allison?
Uh, Hetske.
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tidys?
Aye.
Hey, you guys, clear?
Can we?
Yeah, come on up.
Can we start working on our landscaping and make it look a little better? Or should we wait till we get this?
In my opinion, keep moving forward. But I'm one of five.
I can address that. I'll address that. Make a motion to get a vote? Doctor, I'll, I'll address that in my email to you tomorrow about the steps forward for the landscaping. Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I've got a grip on the stain. We're staining all the vertical columns, we're staining all the horizontal columns directly like that. We're gonna paint all the hardwoods black.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. And then we're gonna do cross cables from the top of the column and suspend them out onto the bracketry that's presently holding the horizontal column in front.
And a trining of-
Yes. And a cross brace. We're not gonna have them against the building. We're gonna start at the building-
Correct.
And they're gonna come out from the building and attach where the existing bracketry does that's holding up the horizontal.
Yeah, very, very close to that, yes.
It's about a foot and a half away from the building's bottom.
Correct. Correct. Yes.
That stone, I know, the random, well, there's three of the size stones, they're colored 18 inches high on the setting wall, whatever the length of the patio was.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And your rendering's showing it, Doug.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Eight minutes.
I'll talk fast.
How about Dollar Tree?
It's all due. All right, so, we're over on Empire Boulevard. Main, main address to reference at this point is 1851 Empire Boulevard. However, there are a couple other parcels involved in this site. Formerly was, formerly was used as a rite aid. Doug has just pulled it up, the rendering that was provided by the applicant to convert this building to a Dollar Tree use. At this point, all they're asking, they're asking for two things. The first matter is to repurpose the building, to repurpose the awnings, install new green awnings with the lettering applied when they install it, so it's part of the canopy surface. They'd also be applying the same color scheme to their pylon sign out by the road. They have sufficient parking on the 1851 property for this. Doug just pulled that up. So, it comes to the board, part one, for the appearance of the building with those canopies. Any thoughts? It's Dollar Tree's typical green that we see usually in their lettering, but now it's reversed, so that's on the canopy. It was formerly a very blue, it was all blue canopies for rite aid that had one sign on the left side of the image. I should note that if the applicant does wish to have two buildings on its signs, it would require variance for the second building on its sign as well.
Thoughts on- Awful lot of green.
What you see.
Was an awful lot of blue. Like blue, not like green?
You know, I-
Should we bring up Home Depot?
I like green as much as the next guy. Yeah, speaking of which, they never did come in. They never did come back and ask for that change.
No, they've been quiet, don't chink some.
Yeah.
Anyways, back to rite, back to Dollar Tree.
Terry? Bob?
I have no issues with the color on that awning. It's the same awning, it would just be-
Green instead of-
Green.
Yeah, they'd be installing a new awning.
Yeah.
They're already taking, the blues are already down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't disagree with you that it's a lot of green, but it is what it is.
Yeah, I'm okay.
It would also be, I should say that it would also be backlit for the one, whichever, for anything with signage.
So, the retired green and white would be backlit? Or you'd just see Dollar Tree that night? Or is it green opaque? Or is it translucent?
My opinion is that the entire thing would be backlit.
Okay.
The entire awning.
Okay.
The awning itself will be backlit.
Okay.
They don't need, they don't need any variances, right?
They need, I think they need a variance for-
This will require one if they decide to move forward with the sign package with that. Do you plan on moving that way?
I'm both, I mean, obviously-
That's what Dollar Tree wants?
Yeah, they would love it, and obviously, the Renovatives would love to see it happen. I mean, if a variance is necessary, then that's the route we would take.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Also, we're looking at-
There's a site plan modification request with this as well, so I just, I would ask for a vote first on the updates to the building facade.
Okay.
And make a motion that we approve the, the changes to the facade and the pylon sign subject to the approval of the ZBA.
Hang on a second.
Okay, Hetske.
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tidys?
Aye.
Okay, second item for the overall site, which involves multiple addresses on Empire Boulevard, is to do a site plan modification to allow for a tractor-trailer turnaround at the rear of the property. They provided, Doug, use zoom out to see the whole site.
Yeah, zoom.
Okay. So, the building on the right that you see is the proposed Dollar Tree. In the back, I know there's a cross fit in there, and I don't know if there's-
American Home Patient.
Thank you. So, they're proposing there's a, there's a turning template that was also provided. However, the tractor trailer were coming in off Empire Boulevard, go around the site to the north, pull in front in the turnaround, and then back into the Dollar Tree to do its deliveries, and then go back out the way it came. There's a drive-through canopy that's kind of in the way on the south side, therefore, the turnaround's proposed to get the truck in and out. The history with this is that this, the site in this area was originally proposed for landbank parking that has not been installed to date. It is on the approved plans from 97, I believe. What they're showing here is a turnaround in place of portions of that landbank parking as well as 11 new spaces, all of it's highlighted in gray. What I need to point out there is that the proposal, and two, two things, is that the reduction in the available parking with the landbank included now brings the site not into compliance with our code for the minimum number of parking spaces. So, that would require a variance in itself for less parking due to the fact that a turnaround's now being added, and the parking spaces that were originally designed are no longer there. And if you want, do you have the original plan and the 120 seconds that I had to do this?
So, the density for a Dollar Tree's gotta be very, very similar to the density for-
For rite aid, yes.
Has there, has there ever been a problem that you're aware of with the capacity for-
Not that I'm aware of, and that's why the landbank parking wouldn't have been installed. So, it's very fair for this board to offer any support for this modification from what was originally approved on the right to what's on the left in lieu of the parking and including a turnaround. The other part of this turnaround is that, as proposed with this build-out, it nearly maximizes what the drainage pond to the rear of the property, it's a drainage pond, drainage area, I should say, it's a water, it's a treatment, a pre-treatment area before the water disperses and infiltrates. That would be at its, it would be nearly at capacity. So, any more parking that would have to be installed at a later date if they wanted to for landbank parking would require drainage improvements. Thoughts, quickly?
I have no problem with it.
The landbank, I'm sorry, the new impervious is within the landbank area?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in place of.
In place of.
In place of most of it.
Okay.
Any issues?
No.
So, we will communicate back to the applicant that all proposals are agreeable and to seek any necessary variances. Thank you, Mike.
Do we need a motion to uh-
One more item, sorry, Doug, go with the landscaping plan for that. Same, same thing, same folder. Thank you. Along this land bank parking area as well, up- Thank you. There was a row of trees that were intended to be installed once land banking park, land bank parking was installed. Be something like an Arborvitie, I believe, I didn't look at the detail of it. Is the board supportive of installing the trees at this time now that the, some of the land banked area is being used? Charlie's Restaurant is to the south of this property.
Was intended as a, as a buffer.
Correct.
I'd say yes.
To asphalt, yeah, except-
That was the-
Except, I know Bruce isn't fond of Arborvitie, so I asked Doug to come up with- Something else more durable.
Okay, we can have him look at that. Again, these plans are from ninety-seven, so we can work with them on that. Okay.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
I'll make a motion to uh- advise the applicant that the board is in-
Also, a point of support.
Maybe we should send a letter to the zoning board, maybe, of support.
Uh, thank you, yes, I would do a letter from the board approving the site plan modification, a letter to the zoning board, and copy the zoning board on that letter with-
Subject to Bruce's review and approval of latest improvements.
Yep, all the, when, all, everything captured in that letter.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, second. Who did that?
Tidings. Hi.
Slow.
Burton?
Hi.
Canower?
Hi.
Higginson?
Hi.
All right, okay, time for a public hearing. Sure.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June eighth, twenty seventeen, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation, one good God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, thanks everybody for coming, we have one item on our agenda tonight. And the way the process works, applicant will present their proposed project, the board will ask questions, and we'll open it up for the, anyone in the audience to comment or address the board with questions. And then, the board will ask some more questions possibly, and then we'll take it back to the table and, and probably consider it later on. So Zach, if you could read the first and only item?
With pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, Lantech Surveying and Planning, seven ten Ladder Road, Rochester, New York, one four six one two, on behalf of Theresa, Theresa Schutte. Request under Chapter two fifty, Article twelve dash twelve point two of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for an eighteen hundred square foot addition to an existing building with associated site improvements, a two point nine two acre property located at ten sixty-three Plank Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Theresa Schutte and is zoned RR1. Application number seventeen P dash zero zero one four, SPL number zero nine four dot zero four dash one dash three eight dot one. Go ahead, John.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Shoraba, and I'm with Lantech. Also with me this evening is Evan Schutte, who can answer any questions that I cannot. The application before you is fairly simple. We're proposing a small eighteen hundred square foot addition to the southwest corner of the existing farm stand, or farm operation, actually. We're all familiar with the Schutte's facility, their cider, baking, a lot of retail operation that goes on there in their agricultural business as well. But the plan is to move the cider press room. Right now, it's located at the northeast corner of the building, it's kind of tucked back in a corner and not very functional for removal of product, installation of product. So the proposed addition is to relocate that to the southwest corner. More opportunity to move product with there, is also a marketing element where people are actually gonna be able to see the operation going on. And then, the, the old facility will turn into a bigger bakery area. We are proposing no new employees at this time, no new retail space at this time, just changing operations, getting a little more room for the cider operation. And so there aren't any changing in utilities, we're not adding any more water usage or anything like that. Part of our plan, working with the farm operation, is trying to handle their peak, which is the fall. If we've all been there, we fully understand there's people parked all over the place. The code requires that we have thirty-one parking spots on the site. Obviously, during the peak time, that is really overcome. The original plan, as it exists today, there are forty-seven spots, and we're proposing sixty-five spots with retooling the site plan associated with the, the new addition. Twenty-five, or excuse me, twenty-three of those spots will be in a gravel parking lot located further south next to a metal building that's currently there. So we're trying to handle the new cider mill with the addition, and also reconfigure the parking lot, 'cause there's some inadequate spacing there. We do have oversized spots, they're, they are bigger than the code, and we have ample room. And that's really the major change to the site plan. The configuration of the, the addition is similar to the building, pole park construction, very agricultural looking, metal siding, metal roof, same gray color. We are continuing the front porch that runs along the east side of the building, we feel that's an architectural element. And as far as functionality, we do have a ramp coming from the south side of the building for access for bringing product into the press room. So that's really the only changes we have with the plan. So we hope you like this proposed addition, it is a minor project, and we'll take any questions at this time.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. John, yeah, so the structure's gonna be basically the same, the addition?
Yes.
What about lighting?
No additional parking lot lighting, we do believe have some sconces underneath the porch area, and those will be added, but nothing else, I believe.
All right, and you need any variances for-
Nope, the fact that we're not expanding our retail operation, staff has done a code review, and there are no variances, meaning-
Okay, and the, PRC, any problems with their comments?
Nope, actually, we fully addressed on their comments that we have, there are three regarding the signage and orientation of the handicap spots, so they've been revised on the current plan. We did have one comment that we had a conflict with regarding staff parking. The comments were, we wanted to note where staff were gonna park. Again, we're dealing with that peak time, and we're trying to get people to park there. The operation and employees during that peak time are parked off-site, they're on the north side of the road, a contiguous property that the Schuttes own, that's where staff park. So we felt that putting signage, pointing, identifying staff parking in their main retail operation was a challenge, so we'd like to push back a little bit on that.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Yep.
John, what, what handicap accessibility improvements are being planned for the existing facility?
The, really are no proposed changes, so the, the only changes we have are related to the parking. We have not proposed any additional ramps or anything like that for access to the building.
Okay, so the, the code would obligate you to spend not more than twenty percent of the cost of construction and, and improvements for handicapped accessibility to the existing facility, so and, and you do that sort of on an order of priority, so exterior accessible route comes first, and then interior accessible route, including toilet rooms and things like that, so
Yep.
Something will need to be submitted along those lines.
Is that related to the building permit process, or more of site plan?
Well, that would depend on which improvements you chose to, to make.
Yeah.
So, if you'd, if you'd rather spend that twenty percent on making the facility more accessible to the public on the exterior accessible route, or with respect to additional parking or what have you, that's, that's up to you.
Okay. Yep, I'm not familiar with that rule, so we'll make sure we address that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
John, the shaded area, is that all proposed to be gravel?
That is existing gravel at this time.
Existing gravel.
Yep, and, and the unshaded area is asphalt.
Okay, and then you're just gonna put, or delineate in some fashion, parking spots on the gravel area?
That is challenging, but we will do it during the fall, but we also did it more just for an accounting basis, so you could see that we have those spots allocated there.
Will a proposed parking be enough, do you feel?
You know, Evan might answer that a little better than I, I mean, from my, from the understanding I see, during his operation during the peak time, there's never enough. There's parking along the road, which is not warrant, you know, not allowed, but it does happen, and it's hard to stop. We're proposing not to stop that as part of this application, but we feel we've, we've gained quite a bit of spots, going from forty-seven to sixty-five is gonna, is uh-
Sure.
Is gonna help us. So we're hoping to alleviate some of the more dangerous situations along Plank Road.
And your, and your building expansion doesn't increase the aggregate load?
Nope.
Okay. Bob, any question?
I have no other additional questions.
Anyone in the audience care to comment on this application? Nobody? Chance to be a TV star?
Hey, Jim, I have one question from PRC.
Yes.
On behalf of the PRC, I just have one follow-up question to your responses, excuse me. Obviously about the, the staff parking area, that's, it was shown on the plan as intended staff parking during the non-peak season. However, if you plan to use that for, for customer parking during the peak season and have staff park off-site, could you explain on the site plan how you intend to avoid having a, a double parked car scenario as it's currently shown? During that, during that peak season, how would, how would a car access, how would a customer access that to both use the spot and leave the spot if there's a vehicle in front of it there, more towards the fortune entrance area?
That is a challenging situation. You know, Evan does park his car there, we do want, don't want the staff, there's only six spots there, I believe, for staff, and that doesn't barely scratch the surface for the people that operate there, so I guess, to rephrase my question, we could put staff parking there, but it's not gonna handle all the staff for the site, so most of the staff parks off-site. So-
Across the street.
Across the street where the barn is, is where they, where they park, but that is a, that is a challenge with that. So I guess we, we could leave the signs there, I just, I didn't want to, my intention was to say that, I don't wanna tell you that all the staff are gonna park right there. You know, we don't have a problem having staff park there, but I just didn't want to persuade or tell the board that we got six people there, we have a lot more people that are there daily, and they're off-site, so we will have staff parking there, I apologize, I was a little confusing with my answer, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause I didn't want, I mean, who wouldn't wanna spend more time and buy some fried cakes? I would, I'd gladly take that double parked spot, but for those that are in a rush, as you know, some people just stop and stop out, they run. Wouldn't want them jammed up, let's say. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. No more further questions, we will call this hearing closed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. Have a good night.
So-
Was that, was your question-
Reconvene.
Was that answered?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I just needed to clarify that, I understand where he's coming from now, in terms of the staff parking, that, that is staff, and there are more staff. I just wanted to clarify this answer that we have in the responses regarding-
Actually, seven in the back, right? Seven in the back, and they park on the north side of the road, 'cause they-
Yep, so I just needed, I wanted to clarify that, just for the record. So again, let's, we'll just run through the project, what gets proposed. Let's see, the first one, architecture, let's, we can start there. We have color elevation that the applicant provided, we have building elevations as well, they mentioned that they intend to keep everything in kind with what's out there, metal siding, metal roof, same colors to match. Any issues from the board on that standpoint, supportive of the porch being extended?
Matches, and just to clarify, that's on the west side of the building, right, not the east side?
Correct. Correct. Any, any issues with that?
Nope, I'm good.
Good with the- Good with the proposed lighting, just on the porch area, additional on the site? Okay. As the applicant mentioned, they did respond to the PRC, PRC, can you highlight, perfect, Doug, perfect. They did add notes to the plan to reconfigure the proposed handicap spaces to allow for sufficient offloading area and to remove the one that has been up by the front of the road for, you know, a long period of time, and to bring it more into compliance, they relocated that elsewhere on the site closer to the main entrance. Staff thinks that's a very good improvement in terms of traffic flow and the overall layout of the parking. Board have any issues?
Nope.
No. Okay. With that, they addressed all the site plan comments, it really wasn't that much. As I said, they don't need any variances for this application. Everything's compliant with the code. Does the board have any final thoughts?
No, I think that since everything's pretty much in order, do we wanna-
I'll make the motion, yeah.
There's EAF.
Yep, approve the EF, EAF.
Okay.
I'll second.
Bob gets a second anyway.
Petzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Canower?
Hi.
Higginson?
Hi. I'll make the motion to approve the application.
Conditions?
I, I think we, we make that with the condition that the applicant provide the board with a note that they're either going to provide some additional accessibility improvements on the exterior accessible route into the facility, or to advise the board that they'll be making handicapped accessibility improvements within the facility as part of their application for a building to live.
And typically, they would, upon receiving the board's approval resolution with conditions noted, the applicant would provide responses to those conditions, acknowledging confirmation and compliance with those. So, again, we hear a motion from Terry for approval with conditions?
We have a second from, who seconded?
Did I?
Bob?
The EAF. Bob's second.
Bob is sure.
Petzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Canower?
Hi.
Higginson?
Hi.
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
Appreciate your time, and, and something I gotta keep in back of my mind, you know, you have to have accessible stuff, so we're already discussing my client, we're coming up with opportunities for that, so we'll make sure it's addressed.
Perfect.
Okay, you'll be in touch.
Have a good night, guys.
Hey, no donuts tonight?
My dad's better at this than I am.
See ya. All right, that concludes this meeting.
All right, so without anything else, we will stand adjourned, thanks, everybody, for coming.